To our YouTube channel. Can I extend a warm welcome to members of the public attending the meeting? You are very welcome to attend and observe proceedings. However, I request politely that you do not disrupt the meeting. Before we commence with today's formal business, could I ask everyone in the chamber to switch off or make silent their mobile phones and all other electronic devices, please? Item one, the minutes of the meeting. Can I have a mover?
Yes, Chair, can I move the minutes, please?
No, councillor Bell?
Second the minutes, Chair.
Are the minutes agreed? Thank you. We move on to item two, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on the agenda? Thank you. We move on to item three, the chair's announcement. Given the time of year, my announcements today are festive themed. Last week I had the pleasure of inviting nine-year-old Roman Williams and his siblings to do the honour of pressing the button to light up the Christmas tree at County Hall and the nearby roundabout. I invited Roman to do this after hearing about the tremendous courage he shows in coping with a chronic heart condition. Roman lives in Fishburne and attends Sedgfield Primary School. He underwent a heart transplant in December 2015, but there were complications with his kidneys, which means he needs dialysis every night. Despite these challenges, he is a cheerful little boy with a cheeky sense of humour who loves computer games, Lego and Newcastle United. Switching on the Christmas tree lights was a wonderful experience for him. You could have bottled and sold the smile on his face when he pressed the button. Thank you, Roman. Also, a huge thank you to everyone who attended my civic dinner in November. Your support was much appreciated. We raised over a thousand pounds towards my two chosen charities. My thanks go to everyone who assisted with the organisation of the event, Victoria from the civic office, the entire member services team, councillor Patricia Joblin, councillor Julie Keynes, councillor Joyce Charlton. Thank you all so very much. Also, thank you who attended my Christmas celebration in the Durham Room last week, when we were tret to an outstanding performance by the Durham Music Service. I have to say, I was almost lost for words after the performance, to see all those young people who come together and showcase their incredible music talent to us. Friends and colleagues from across the North East, it was a very proud and special occasion indeed. My last announcement, don't forget to wear your Christmas jumper, T-shirt, jewellery or even a bit of tinsel next Tuesday, the seventeenth, seventeenth of December, when we will help to raise money for our chosen charities, Tiny Lives and Friends Together. And finally, the most important announcement. Briefly putting the Christmas merriment to one side, please ensure that we are respectful to each other during the meeting. You are all familiar with the rules of debate. Can I ask you please to respect them? We move on to item four, the leader's report. Can I invite the leader of the council to present her report?
Thank you, Chair, and welcome everyone to the last full council meeting of 2024. As the year draws to a close, it's a good time to reflect on a snapshot of what we've achieved over the last 12 months. The devolution of power from Westminster to the North East in the spring was certainly a landmark moment. The trailblazing deal between the government and the new North East Combined Authority has empowered us to go even further, to deliver on our ambitions and to work with our communities on the things that matter most to them. May I once again thank everyone in the chamber who took the bold decision for County Durham to be part of the wider North East Combined Authority, who saw this as an opportunity to deliver for our residents and businesses on such a big scale. And in the first six months alone, we have secured funding for the county to the tune of tens of millions of pounds and secure an access to further funding unavailable through any other channel. In the summer, we celebrated the opening of the story, our new culture heritage and registration venue, and new hall, Locomotion's new exhibition space, which we were proud to support. Staying with culture, our vibrant festival and events programme continued to delight residents and attract tens of thousands of visitors to the county. We also launched Into the Light, a three-year programme that aims to empower communities, inspire children and young people and break down barriers to working in creative industries. Twenty twenty-four was an exciting year for Net Park, which celebrated its twentieth anniversary and saw the last piece of steelwork fitted as part of the sixty-two million pound Phase Three expansion. Many other construction projects were completed this year, including a new roundabout at Seaton Lane, the expansion of Snipely Park and Ride, and the building of Spring Mua Grange Primary School in Spennymua and Belmont Secondary School. In July, we adopted our third climate emergency response plan, which sets out more than two hundred and thirty actions to help us become a net zero council by 2030 and a net zero county by 2045. Earlier this month, we retained our green accreditation for the third year in a row from investors in the environment. We were also awarded best carbon reduction award at their annual awards, with Joe Holmes, the managing director of Genie Consulting Limited, the North East hub for investors in the environment, saying, "We love working with Durham County Council through the Investors in the Environment Programme. They are an excellent example of leadership from a local authority around this agenda. The breadth of projects the council is involved in is to be commended and evidenced that the team recognise that projects of all scales have value in addressing climate change. We're so pleased Durham County Council has been recognised for its hard work with the Best Carbon Reduction Award at this year's Investors in the Environment Awards. It is a huge achievement and testament to their continued commitment to the environment." The report we offer, the support we offer to children and vulnerable adults was also recognised. Our adult social care provision was rated as good by the Care Quality Commission, while our specialist children's home was rated outstanding in all areas. Ofsted inspectors also praised the support we offer to care leavers. As I said at the beginning, this is just a snapshot of an incredibly busy year, and I'd like to say a big thank you to all members, council staff, our partners and our communities for their hard work. And I hope you all have a wonderful Christmas, a well-deserved break, and I look forward to continuing to work together in 2025 to build a brighter future for County Durham. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Does any members have any questions on the report? Can I ask the council to note the report? We move on to item five, questions from the public. Two questions have been received for today's meeting from Mr Clark and Professor Talaman. I will take the questions in the order in which they were received. The first question was submitted by Mr Clark. Mr Clark is unable to attend the meeting today, however, he has asked that I put his question to the council. The question is being displayed on the screen and reads as follows. Meetings of the Durham County Council Cabinet sees the leader and the cabinet portfolio holders rise within a structured agenda and read out pre-prepared statements. This has been standard practice for many years, not limited to the current administration. And just to reassure members, this is not politically motivated, but certainly the method used by Labour when I sat on the council between 2017 and 2021. The meetings currently mimic a read-through of TV script and whilst appreciate the need for preparation, and that officers will almost always prepare a worded statement in advance, the meetings are overstaged. All councillors should be concerned with the connecting to the public to politics. Cabinet members give important information, but they are not meetings, they are read-through. Currently, everyone's time could be saved by simply collating the responses in a scripted format and publishing them on the council website. Can the cabinet member format be reviewed with consideration given on how a better balance can be struck so the meetings at least appear more organic and natural? If any changes are implemented, I hope full council can agree to retain an important, to retain any importance, improvement, sorry, before the current council term. Can I invite the leader of the County Council, Amanda Hopgood, to respond, please?
Thank you, Chair, and I'd like to thank Mr Clark for his question. Cabinet members operating, cabinet meetings, sorry, operating accordance with the executive procedure rules as set out in the council's constitution, and the format has remained unchanged for many years. Given the proximity to the elections in May 2025, the Director of Legal and Democratic Services will review the format of cabinet meetings with whoever is elected leader at the AGM on the 21st of May 2025, and a report will be presented to the first meeting of the All Party Constitution Working Group in the new municipal year. Thank you.
Thank you. The second question has been submitted by Professor Talaman, who is present at the meeting. The question is being displayed on the screen. Can I invite Professor Talaman to ask her question, please?
Thank you and good morning, councillors. Since the council last considered the issue of water fluoridation, there have been three developments. A US federal court ruled that water fluoridation poses an unreasonable risk to the IQ of children, and the US National Toxicology Programme found a large body of evidence to support this. In the UK, the well-respected Cochrane Report found that any reduction in tooth decay in fluoridated areas was so tiny or possibly non-existent that the continuation of fluoridation programmes is of questionable clinical or public health value. In light of these new findings, will Durham County Council now reconsider its support for fluoridation, return the matter to the scrutiny committee and the Health and Wellbeing Board for debate, and allow representations to these committees from all viewpoints, including opponents of fluoridation? Thank you.
Thank you. Can I invite councillor Chris Hood, cabinet portfolio holder for adult wellbeing and health, to respond, please?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Professor Talaman, for your question. The Department for Health and Social Care consultation on the community water fluoridation expansion in the North East of England has been considered by the appropriate committees of the council, the Health and Wellbeing Board, and both the children and young people and adults and health overview and scrutiny committees. We received several representations which were considered and responses were provided. These responses, the responses, sorry, of both these committees to the consultation were submitted to the DHSC. The consultation closed on the 31st of July 2024. Existing fluoridation schemes in the United Kingdom are the responsibility of the Secretary of State for Health and Social Care, who is required by legislation to monitor the effects of water fluoridation schemes on health and to produce reports at no greater than four yearly intervals. County Durham has an oral health promotion strategy which includes a range of interventions to improve oral health and reduce dental decay, including fluoridation and supervised tooth brushing schemes. An update on this strategy, including any new evidence, will be provided to the Adults' Health and Wellbeing Overview and Scrutiny Committee in January 2025. This will also include an update on the outcome of the DHSC consultation on the expansion of community water fluoridation in the North East if available. Members of the public will be able to attend the scrutiny committee in the usual way. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. That concludes this item. Thank you to those people taking the time to submit a question. The question, questions and responses for today's meeting will be posted on the council's website following the meeting. We move on to item number six, petitions. There is one petition being presented at today's meeting. The petition relates to the Station Hotel at South Hetton. The petition organiser, Cheryl Elliott, is in attendance today to present the petition. Can I invite Cheryl to the lectern? You have five minutes to present your petition. I will indicate when there is one minute remaining.
Good morning, everybody. So I'm here today to request that action be taken to demolish the Station Hotel in South Hetton, or to, at the very least, repurpose it. My name is Cheryl and I am a resident of South Hetton. I moved there about eighteen years ago as my husband and I needed a base to commute easily between Teeside and Newcastle. We have no local connection before that to the village, and we've certainly got no mining legacy. We looked at every village on the A19 between Redcar and Newcastle to find a home, and we settled on South Hetton as we knew even back then that it was a village on the up with facilities, lovely green spaces, and people really cared about it. And I don't think that we're unique or alone in this regard, and that the demographic has changed considerably over the three decades that's been before us. And the population of this lovely village is thrilled to see it flourishing. The blot on the landscape, however, both literally and emotionally, is the Station Hotel. I'm here with Gillian, the Chair of the Parish Council, who's campaigned for many years to have this issue resolved, and has been instrumental in bringing about change for our village through a strong vision for community, successful funding applications and regeneration, and she's worked tirelessly for investment and opportunities. I came along and started this petition over the summer. We received three hundred and fifty-four signatures, and we would like to see a compulsory purchase order for greater enforcement and action to demolish this Station Hotel. It's currently a dilapidated, dangerous disgrace, and it's right in the centre of our village. It's been empty for around fifteen years, and we understand that the owner isn't local, hasn't got a connection to the village, and has never been to review it. He bought it online. It feels really unfair that our community suffers at the hands of an anonymous businessman that seems to have no social conscience. He's been made aware many times of the state of it, both by the council and the parish council, and we know that somebody used to help him maintain it, but those attempts to maintain it lapsed some time ago. At least two offers have been made to him by people who wanted to turn it into a new business venture. However, the asking price was out of keeping with its state of disrepair, and costs to repair it is simply not feasible. There seems to be no incentive at this present time for the owner to take action, and so far the council haven't really pushed this. Over the years, it's been vandalised many times, pipes have been ripped out, and it's been flooded, and fires have been started within it. The cellar entrance is right at the front, and it's a death trap. His answer to this was to have dolomite poured on top of the hatches. That was then stolen, and the risk remains. We know children are drawn to it, and the local school is very worried about the consequences. South Hetton is an east Durham village with so much to offer. Residents care about the village, we want to improve our surroundings. We've got a thriving community centre, a successful cricket club with two new men's teams, a women's team. There are successful businesses, including Puff and Billy. We bring employment to the area. All of our industrial units are filled, and customers come from all over the area. Regeneration is occurring rapidly with new housing developments. Some are underway, some are at planning. The local primary school has had a successful Ofsted recently, narrowly missing out on an outstanding rating, and we're looking forward to the future. Aspirational updates to existing homes are occurring, and there is a real sense of pride when you enter the village. That is until you reach the centre of the village and you see the Station Hotel. It's really not a good advert for redevelopment. Opposite it is our beautiful church. It is, it really does really compromise the feel of our village. Police are called to it, there are vandals, they congregate, they smash bottles, they throw tiles, they cause mischief, and we've already had a case of arson in the village recently. If the Station Hotel goes up, the car mechanics, Puff and Billy, other businesses, they go with it. Local people have weddings and funerals at our lovely church. They arrive at it and are met with the Station Hotel. Imagine having that as the backdrop of your wedding photos. As a final resort, we're asking for the council to take a much more direct and focused action to ensure that this building is taken down and made aesthetically pleasing. Even an open space would be better than what we have now. The space could be used for another venture in line with the values of the community in time, but for now, we need the area to be safe. The owner has been given fifteen years to renovate, sell or demolish, and is clearly not going to do any of these things. The parish council have been asking for this for a long time, and we've done everything that we can as a village, but now it's over to you. There are no other problems in the village. If this was sorted, there wouldn't be anything else for us to do. A compulsory purchase order would be expensive, yes, but due to the market value, surely this would be less expensive than the repercussions of the building harming somebody. There's been a lot of good work carried out in the village, but the problems have transferred to this building. It's an accident waiting to happen. Do we really have to wait until a tragedy before you act? Please make this a priority to improve our village. There's only so much that we can do. Please take action to force the hand of an irresponsible landowner whose impact is enormous, yet he seems not to care. Please help us rectify this injustice. Thank you.
Can I thank the petition organisers for presenting the petition, and in doing so, ask the council to receive the petition, which will be forwarded to the appropriate services for a response? We do have some photographs that we are going to send to all members. We have one member who has registers to speak, but there is no provision to speak on petitions. So we move on to item number seven, report from the cabinet. Can I ask the leader of the council to present the report?
I present the report as tabled in the papers.
No questions have been received on the report. Can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you. Item eight, care experience as a protected characteristic. Colleagues, it was hoped to consider this item at today's meeting. However, the young people involved were not able to attend today's meeting due to other commitments. Therefore, this item has been deferred and will be considered at a future meeting. We move on to item nine, mid-year review report on treasury management for the period of the 30th of September 2024. Can I ask the Corporate Director of Resources to present the report?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. So this report provides an overview of our treasury management activity during the first six months of this year and the position at the 30th of September for the council's borrowing and investments. It also provides an update on the work that's underway in terms of the changes to how we need to account for leases, which will mean we'll have to reflect the future liabilities of those leases in our balance sheet at the end of this year. The report also sets out for council consideration some proposed changes to the council's minimum revenue provision policy, which sets out how we provide for principal repayments for our external borrowing. And where, following a review, we are proposing to change our policy this year in order to deliver budget savings next year. Finally, the report also provides some proposed changes to the counterparty limits, which govern how much money we can invest in individual financial institutions. The report meets the requirements of the Prudential Code and includes details of performance against the various treasury management policy and strategy and prudential indicators agreed by the council as part of the 2024-25 budget setting in February. The table of paragraph twenty provides a summary of our overall treasury management position. Members will see that at the 30th of September, we had total debt outstanding of £409 million and total cash investments of £157 million. Our net debt position therefore at the 30th of September was £252 million. Comparison figures at the 31st of March are provided in the table. And members will see that our external borrowing at the 30th of September was £4 million lower than the position at the 1st of April, reflecting the principal repayments on annuity loans in the first six months of this financial year. Cash investments are £60 million lower than the position at the 1st of April, largely reflecting the delay in required external borrowing to fund the capital programme and using our cash balances to meet the capital expenditure in the short term. The council's borrowing activity is detailed in sections twenty-three to twenty-seven of the report and the average interest rate paid on our external debt at the 30th of September is 3.10%. Members will see that we didn't take out any new borrowing in the first six months of this year as we continue our strategy of running down cash balances and internally borrowing until the interest rates get closer to our budget provision. The current borrowing rates are around five and a half percent and we've assumed a four and a half percent borrowing rate in terms of our budget provision, so we need to wait till rates come down in order to avoid a budget pressure. We refinanced £58 million of loans with a private sector institution in the summer and we successfully reduced the interest rate we pay by agreeing to repay over a shorter term and converting that loan to equal instalments of principal loan, saving around about £400,000 per annum in interest costs, which have been factored into our latest MTFP proposals. An overview of our investment activity is set out in sections fifty-seven to sixty and the table of paragraph fifty-eight provides a breakdown of the institutions, the length of investments and the interest rates secured on those investments at the 30th of September. All investments at the 30th of September and during the first six months of this year were in line with our treasury management strategy. In line with the requirements of the Prudential Code, the report sets out details of our performance against the various treasury management and prudential indicators, including details of our capital expenditure and financing arrangements and our capital financing requirement in 24/25. As members will see, the council continues to fully comply with its treasury management strategy and its policies and is meeting all the requirements of the Prudential Code. In recognition of the reduction in our cash balances, there are proposed changes, reductions in the counterparty limits set out in sections sixty-one to sixty-four. This will ensure that the council, if approved today, will ensure that we don't have or we're not overly exposed in terms of funding, that's with any individual financial institution. The report sets out proposals to amend the council's minimum revenue provision policy and to apply the proposed changes this year, which will produce a saving against the 24/25 budget and for which we will make a voluntary revenue provision payment this year, which will allow us to factor in MTFP budget savings from next year to help us assist with balancing the council's budget. The saving this year will be unwound in future years and the increases from 26/27 will need to be factored into our MTFP proposals and be cushioned by the voluntary payment we'll make this year. The proposed policy changes have been developed in consultation with our treasury management consultants and advisers, have been considered by the Order Committee in detail at its meeting last week, and we've discussed the changes with our external auditors also. And the details are set out at section thirty-six to fifty-six of the report. The change in the policy would bring the council's policy in line with most other councils who have sought to adopt similar policies in recent years. Finally, as members will be aware from our previous reports, there are changes coming with regards to how we need to account for leases. These changes have been overseen by the Order Committee also and will ensure the council complies with International Financial Report and Standard Number Sixteen. And the report provides an update on the work that has been undertaken to ensure that our 24/25 accounts reflects these changes and details as set out at paragraph thirty to thirty-five of the report. The recommendations, Chair, are set out at paragraph thirteen and for council to note the treasury management position and agree the proposed changes to the council's minimum revenue provision policy and to the counterparty limits as set out in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a mover to the report? Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Chair. Can I thank the Resources Director and his team for this comprehensive report on our treasury management activity during the first half of the year and setting out our position as at the 30th of September? I'd also like to thank the Audit Committee for their scrutiny of this report and the overall treasury position at its meeting on the 29th of November. It's pleasing to note that the council has continued to fully comply with all the requirements of the treasury management policy and strategy we agreed back in February. It's important that as a council, our officers carefully manage our cash flows, external borrowing and investments, and ensure we maintain compliance with the relevant codes of practice in line with the prudential framework, as this is fundamental to delivering on our fiduciary responsibilities for the effective stewardship of public money. Treasury management is an important area of activity and it's only right that there are safeguards and controls in place to ensure we focus on the security of those funds over short-term gains and that the council receives regular updates on both our performance and our position, but also on compliance with the policies and procedures we've put in place. I welcome the review that's been undertaken and the proposals to amend the minimum revenue provision policy, which is in line with the arrangements that many of the councils have already done and which was considered in some detail by the Audit Committee. As the report outlines, the proposed changes are in line with the existing guidance and have been reviewed by the external auditors. I also endorse the proposed changes to the counterparty limits that are recommended in the report in order to reduce the risk of too high a sum being invested in any one financial institution. With that, Chair, I would move that the council notes the treasury management position and approves the recommendations as set out at paragraph thirteen.
Thank you. Can I have a second to the report? Councillor Alex Watson?
Yes, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Can I also thank Paul and his team for this comprehensive report and for their contributions to the Order Committee meeting on 29th of November, where members of the committee had a chance to view in detail our treasury management position and the proposed changes to the minimum revenue position policy and the county party limits that we have been asked to approve today. Can I place on record my thanks to the Order Committee members present for their involvement in the scrutiny of this report and its proposals? I can confirm that the Order Committee are satisfied that the council has continued to adhere to the treasury management policies and practices we agreed at council in February and that the proposed policy changes set out in this report are in line with statutory regulations and are okay from the external auditor's perspective. Indeed, they are policy changes that many of the councils made a number of years ago now and will help protect frontline service delivery next year. With that, Chair, I'd like to second the report and recommendations as set out in paragraph thirteen. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any questions on the report? Does any member wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the council to agree the recommendations in the report? Thank you. We move on to item ten, review of local pension board. Can I ask the Corporate Director of Resources to present the report?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. The local pension board was established in 2015. It's an important part of the governance of the Durham Pension Fund. It brings together scheme employers and scheme member representatives to oversee the work of the Pension Committee, but also to oversee the administration of the Durham Pension Fund. The board must have an equal number of scheme employer and scheme member representatives with a minimum requirement of no less than four board members in total. The board cannot include an officer or a councillor of the administrative authority who is responsible for the discharge of functions under the LGPS regulations. Therefore, anyone who is a member of the Pension Committee cannot be a member of the local pension board. The board currently comprises of six members, three scheme employer representatives and three scheme member representatives, with two vacancies currently. Prior to recruiting to the current vacancies, the composition of the pension board has been reviewed and is proposed that the board be increased to eight members, four each from the employer representatives and the member representatives to reflect the change in the size of the pension fund since 2015. Members will see that the assets under management in 2015 were around £2.1 billion and they are now valued at £3.7 billion. The proposals set out in this report are being considered and supported by the Constitution Working Group and Chair, the recommendations are set out at paragraph six with the council asked to approve the changes to the composition of the local pensions board. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a mover to the report? Councillor Hobgood?
Thank you, Chair. I welcome the review of the membership of the local pension board and support the proposals to expand the membership to eight. The increase in numbers is in line with the pension scheme regulations and the expectations of the pensions regulator and is reflective of the increase in the size of the pension fund since the local pensions board was established in 2015, as explained by Paul. It will provide increased resilience and hopefully lead to better participation in the important discussions and role that the local pension board plays. With that, Chair, I'd like to move the report and recommendations as set out in paragraph six and in doing so, thank the officers for preparing the report.
Thank you, councillor. Can I have a second to the report? Councillor Rob Crute?
Thank you, Chair. And I add my thanks to those of Amanda, to the officers for preparing the report. The rationale for increasing the membership with the committee of the local pensions board is clear. The proposals are set out are in line with the regulations and have been discussed at the Constitution Working Group and I would hope that all members this morning can agree them. Therefore, I'd like to formally second the report and the recommendation set out at paragraph six. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any questions on the report? Does any member wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the council to agree the recommendations in the report? Thank you. We move on to item eleven, Director of Public Health Annual Report 2024. Can I invite the Director for Public Health to present her annual report?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. As you know, obviously the Director of Public Health has a statutory responsibility to write an annual report and the council has a responsibility to republish that report. Last year's report looked back over ten years of public health and local government with the policy to look ahead in this year's report. And that's what I, along with a very wide range of people who have contributed to this report, have done. This year's report is really in three parts. The first part is looking at the health of our people locally. It's then looking at the future health and we've used some projections to look at the future health of our local residents. And then the third part of the report is what we're either already doing or what additional actions we need to do to mitigate some of the projections that I will be sharing with you this morning. And the title of the report is about that unfairness, however, also that these health and wellbeing issues are avoidable. And that's a really clear message to get across through the report. And also throughout the report, hopefully what you will see is examples of evidence of taking good practice and what we may need to do is scale that or move it into different parts of the county, but also where we might need to be doing more. The first part of the report really looks at the health of our local residents and this is the work of our local joint, Needs and Assets Assessment. What you will see is obviously a range of health data. That's hopefully all in one place on Durham insight that people can access easily. And on this slide, you will see obviously some areas of our residents where we're actually better than in other parts of the country, things like bowel screening. But for other parts of our health and wellbeing, such as smoking at time of delivery, we fare worse than other parts of the country. I suppose our data is there to help us target and target our resources and target our interventions and should be used in that way. You'll see in the report that our life expectancy locally, so a baby boy born in County Durham today can expect to live to 77.9 years of age and a baby girl born today can live to 80.8 years. And both of those are lower than the national average. So we must be striving to close that gap between County Durham and the national average for life expectancy. But there is also variation within County Durham as well. And that is where, as I say, we need to really think about how we target our interventions to make that difference come about. However, in terms of that fairness, it doesn't always fall fairly geographically either. You'll see in the report that the east of our county has areas of greater disadvantage, but that also other factors play into people's health and wellbeing, which may be protected characteristics or it may be issues such as homelessness or rurality. And they are all the things that we need to put into the mix to think about what we put in place to mitigate poor health and wellbeing and really promote good health and wellbeing for our residents. The causes of that gap in life expectancy is also identified in the report. And there are some differences between the causes for men and for women. So again, we can look at using that data and information to guide us in terms of what we're already doing, but to tailor that in a slightly better way. Thank you. I think over the last year, now we're kind of post-COVID, we've really done a lot of work with partners to understand different elements of health and wellbeing. And this is an example here where we've really looked at our mothers who are dependent on tobacco during pregnancy, gathered information from a range of hospital sites where our mums give birth. And I think what we have found is there is a great variation in terms of the numbers of mothers who are dependent on tobacco when they give birth. And that varies from one in three of our mums to one in 20. So again, what we need to do is really think about how we reach those people who are most in need of support for addiction such as smoking. What you'll also see in the report, however, is how we're trying to address them of this. And I'll come on to an example in a moment, but we're also working very closely with Durham University on a really exciting research agenda in relation to health and wellbeing under our Health Determinants collaboration. The next slide really identifies, however, with those young mums who are smoking during pregnancy. during pregnancy, the work that we're seeking to try and work with those mums and address their dependency. And through some of the families' funding, we have a Health Inequalities midwife who is actually working out, particularly working into our family hubs, and really thinking about that integration across our services and the support that's needed to reduce smoking rates, particularly in those most disadvantaged areas. We've also utilized some of our additional funding that's come for stop smoking services to put additional posts into our family hubs. So that's starting to build a picture of where we can address some of these inequalities that are unfair and avoidable. I know it may sound quite deficit-focused and damning in terms of some of our health statistics, but how we're seeking to address some of those is through our approach to wellbeing, and over the last year, approach to wellbeing has an umbrella and sits under the County Durham Together programme, and this is about how we work with our local residents and not due to our local residents, but also using what works, so using best evidence, but also those really important local conversations. And a really good example of this in the report is the Growing Up in County Durham strategy, which was absolutely developed with children and families, and that has continued into the work of our family hubs locally as well. I suppose the co-centre of the report is also thinking about the health of our people, and you'll see here, one of our community champions, and we've got a community champions programme and a developing young community champions programme, and I mentioned rurality a little while ago, and you'll hear that Becky Land is a local farmer, who was really concerned about, particularly about mental health on farming in rural communities. Becky had worked really closely with the Local Health Watch and with the practice to change how some of the local services were delivered. So actually, services were delivered out to the farming community rather than in the practice, and you can see from the example that of those actually receiving some of the checks, around sixty-three percent required some further intervention. So identifying people early, but also ensuring that people get the right support from any medical conditions that they would have, which otherwise would go untreated. And it's this type of work under approach to wellbeing which is really important in addressing our health needs. I said about the future health of our people, and what we've used here, we've used some projections from the Health Foundation, which have been used nationally, and we've also supplemented those with our local projections, for us to look ahead and see what might the future look like, to help us really focus on where we need to look at in terms of health and wellbeing. So we expect our life expectancy to gradually increase over the coming years, up to two thousand and forty. However, what we look at when we think about the future health of our people, thank you, is that what we will find is that our local residents, whereas they might live a slightly longer life, there will be more years of that life which will be in poor health. So what we will see is actually by two thousand and forty, potentially one in five residents living with a major illness, and that's an increase of almost thirty-nine percent of twenty-four thousand people. And again, what we see, that would impact across our whole, being in County Durham, in terms of our economy, our education, impact on our NHS, and on our children and young peoples and adult social care services. So we're looking at these projections to help guide us in relation to our resource allocation, and also where to place our attention with partners in terms of the future health of our population. And similar to what I said earlier in queue, what we will also see from these projections is that that poor health won't fall fairly. So what we would see potentially is an increase in major illnesses of about forty-six percent in our areas of greatest disadvantage compared to thirty-five percent in the areas of least disadvantage. And I think what you'll see there on the slide as well is that the numbers are greater in our areas of disadvantage. Thank you. We've looked at those as well for some of our major illnesses, and we've just picked out two for the report this morning. For our cancer projections, what we're likely to see is around twenty-nine thousand of our local residents would be living with cancer by two thousand and forty. And again, there's that unfairness in relation to where the burden of cancer will fall, with an increase of thirty-seven percent in our most deprived compared to twenty-one in our least deprived parts of the county. And that's also similar for anxiety and depression projections and inequalities, which we would see about a thirty percent increase in our most deprived compared to nine percent in our least deprived. So these are quite stark, and these are projections. However, the last part of the report really starts to drive home, a, what we are already doing, and what we're doing effectively, but where we also, with our partners, need to really increase and scale and embed work across our council and across our partnerships. Thank you. We know from the person that's reflected in the annual report that about fifteen percent of people's health and wellbeing is made over their interactions with health and social care services and the services that they receive. We're not starting from scratch in terms of our work in County Durham, there's a wide range of really high-quality work that's taking place, and I wanted to reflect some of that in the report. So this section that you'll see on health and social care services, we've drawn out a particular example here, where again, we're responsible as a council for health visiting services, that's a universal provision for all of our young families. However, what we do have is then some specialist provision for some of our community, and Bernie Crooks, who was our specialist health visitor, working with our Gypsy Roma traveller community, does some fantastic work, really thinking about the health and wellbeing, and is a trusted voice with that community. You'll also see in the report at the other end, in terms of our adult social care, and some really great work at Needs Assessment with our carers and our carer's support organisation, and the work with our adult social care in terms of the work in preparation for the adult social care assessment. Thank you. In relation to healthy behaviours, we know that healthy behaviours are not necessarily about choice, but are shaped by the environments in which people live, by the work that they do. However, what we do see in this section, at least for tobacco, and this is what we'll really be looking at for all of our health priorities, we do have an ambition in relation to tobacco, we're aiming for five percent tobacco by two thousand and thirty. That's one of the recommendations that we need to look at that for some of our other conditions. We are seeing a reduction, we've seen a reduction in cardiovascular disease. However, within that, we are still seeing some inequalities. I just mentioned there's tobacco dependency during pregnancy, and we're still seeing some variation with our routine and manual workers. However, with concerted effort and using evidence and local policy and advocating for change at a national level, change is coming about, so we can make a difference. And that is replicated in the report for obviously some of our other priorities, including alcohol and also healthy weight. And then the third priority under healthy, fourth priority under healthy behaviours is our work in relation to mental health. And obviously, this is a really important priority for us locally. The evidence isn't quite as strong in mental health as compared to something like tobacco. So again, we're working with colleagues at the university to think about the research that we need to do to build that and support that evidence base, but what we see is around one in six of our children and young people having a mental health condition, and a huge amount of work and focus on this. And the example here is at a really kind of preventative end of the spectrum, thinking about our wellbeing framework in our schools and what the children and people themselves have done to change the school environment, to make it more supportive and to build resilience. But certainly more to do. And then finally, in terms of our wider determinants of health, we think that's around about forty percent of what makes up people's health and wellbeing. You'll see in the report examples in relation to good education and good mental health within our schools, and also dedicated work within our drug and alcohol services to support people back into employment. But certainly this example with our Better Health at Work Award, which you have over about a hundred organisations, is a really small voluntary sector organisation that's become part of the award, really thinking about their staff health and wellbeing, because if we have a good working environment, it supports good health as well as good work. And so, finally, members, in terms of the recommendations, there are a set of recommendations set out in the report, and I think certainly the most important one is that we'll translate those projections into very specific trajectories and actions to feed into the next year's report and the future reports, to see what exactly we are building on already, but what more targeted work we will be doing to address and mitigate some of those projections, which will impact on people personally and across all parts of their life. And so in conclusion, it is that really looking forward, it is thinking about those unfairly distributed projections across our county, that we can avoid them, and that further work and how we do that has to be done in partnership with others. And, Chair, the recommendation is to receive the annual report.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the report? Can I invite councillor Chris Hood to speak on the report?
Thank you, Chair. I'm pleased to welcome the independent annual report from Amanda Healy, Director of Public Health, and thank her and the team in its production. This year's report, Unfair and Avoidable: Looking Ahead to Health in Two Thousand and Forty, has a focus on the future health of County Durham residents. It is great to see the recommendations that are highlighted within the report, which build on existing work and identify new opportunities. I look forward to future annual reports where we can report on the progress we are making to ensure that the projections set out in this report do not become a reality. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Does any other member wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the council to receive the report? Thank you. We move on to item twelve, the review of the council's statement of gambling principles, the gambling policy. Can I ask the Corporate Director of Neighbourhoods and Climate Change to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, council. This report brings the final draft statement of gambling policy for the periods two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-eight to full council for approval. The Gambling Act of two thousand and five requires that local authorities publish a statement of gambling policy every three years. Our current policy was published in January two thousand and twenty-two, and new policy is therefore now required for January two thousand and twenty-five. The policy applies to gambling premises located within County Durham, and also some gambling activities that take place within the county. It does not, however, apply to remote or virtual gambling, as the responsibility for regulating these activities falls to the Gambling Commission. An extensive consultation exercise has been carried out, and responses have been considered, and where appropriate, incorporated into the new draft policy. The new draft policy is attached to the main report as appendix two. The changes proposed in the new policy are limited to minor amendments and the provision of additional guidance, and these are outlined in appendix four of the report. The draft statement of gambling policy was considered and endorsed for recommendation of full council by the Statutory Licensing Committee on the seventh of October two thousand and twenty-four. As set out in paragraph eight of the report, the council has recommended to agree and adopt the revised statement of licensing policy as contained in appendix two.
Thank you. Can I have a mover to the report, councillor Brown?
Thank you, Chair. This statement of gambling policy confirms the council's commitment to the Gambling Act's three statutory licensing objectives, namely, preventing gambling from being a source of crime or disorder, ensuring gambling is conducted in a fair and open way, and protecting children and vulnerable people from harm. It is vital that the council regularly reviews this policy and has in place a clear and robust framework to assist decision-making, and to support effective regulation of licensed gambling premises and activities to ensure that they promote the act's objectives. I would like to thank the members of the Statutory Licensing Committee for their ongoing dedication to the council in developing this policy, and to the council officers involved in undertaking this review. This policy has been developed following extensive consultation and reflects current national guidance and best practice. I am therefore happy to move this report and propose this policy for adoption by the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a second to the report, councillor John Shuttlesworth?
Thanks, Chair. This policy promotes effective and responsible management of licensed gambling premises and regulated gambling activities throughout the county. It has been reviewed, having had regard to the statutory guidance, the licensing objectives, and the views of those who have consulted. I extend my thanks to the Statutory Licensing Committee and officers involved, and happy to move the report for the council to adopt the policy, please. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any questions on the report? Does any member wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the council to agree the recommendations in the report? Thank you. We move on to item thirteen, protocol on members' use of the resources. Can I ask the Director of Legal and Democratic Services to present the report?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. In preparation for the elections in May two thousand and twenty-five, the council's been undertaking a review of its governance arrangements and the policies and procedures that it has in place to support members in their role. There's been a number of queries since the elections in May two thousand and twenty-one regarding the use of council resources, which identified that there's no policy or guidance in place to help members understand what they can use council resources for. Under section two of the Local Government Act nineteen eighty-six, the council's prohibited from publishing or arranging to be published any material which is in whole or in part appears to be designed to affect public support for a political party, and publicity is defined as communication in whatever form addressed to the public at large or a section of the public. Local authorities are also prevented from providing financial or other assistance for the publication of material which the authority is prohibited from publishing themselves. The council provides a wide range of resources to members to enable them to discharge their responsibilities as councillor, but it's important that those resources are used for council business rather than political purposes. And therefore, we're proposing to introduce a protocol that's attached as appendix two, to provide that clear guidance in relation to the use of council resources and to address the queries that have arisen over the last electoral term. The protocol summarises the resources that the council provides, what constitutes council business, and the principles for using those resources, and then the schedule to the protocol contains rules in relation to specific resources. If adopted, the protocol would be one of the documents that members are required to comply with under the Member Code of Conduct, and it would be included in the new Members' Handbook for May two thousand and twenty-five. Constitution Working Group considered the protocol in May, not February, as stated in the report, and by Standards Committee on the seventh of June two thousand and twenty-four, and Standards Committee resolved to recommend to council that it's adopted. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Can I have a mover to the report, councillor Bell?
Thank you, Chair. I welcome the work by officers to ensure that we have appropriate arrangements in place to assist members, particularly those newly elected in May two thousand and twenty-five, to understand what their role and responsibilities are. The protocol is intended to ensure that members are able to use council resources effectively to discharge their duties, while making sure that the council does not breach the prohibition on publishing material which appears designed to affect public support for a particular party or individual. The protocol was developed in response to issues and queries that have arisen since the last election, particularly in relation to links to political blogs, blogs and webpages within email signatures, the use of political party logos and the council logos, and if adopted, the protocol will form part of the new Members' Handbook. The protocol received cross-party support when it was considered by the Constitution Working Group earlier this year, and I'm pleased to note that it was also supported by the Standards Committee. And with that, Chair, I move the report and recommendations at paragraph five.
Thank you, councillor. Can I have a second to the report, councillor Tony Stubb? Can I have a second to the report, councillor Tony Stubbs?
Thank you, Chair. Standards Committee considered the draft protocol on members' use of council resources at its meeting on the 7th of June 2024. The protocol provides clear guidance to all members to ensure that they use council resources appropriately. Adopting the protocol will help the council ensure its legal obligations are met with regard to publicity, but also discharge its statutory duty to uphold high standards of ethical conduct. Therefore, I'm pleased to second the recommendation in the report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any questions on the report? Does any member wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the council to agree the recommendations in the report? Thank you. We move on to item 14, request for dispensation. Can I ask the Director of Legal and Democratic Services to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. Under section 85 of the Local Government Act 1972, where a member fails to attend any meeting of the authority throughout a consecutive period of six months from the date of their last attendance, they cease to become a member unless the reason for non-attendance is approved before the sixth month period expires. Due to a period of ill health, councillor Mamie Simmons has been unable to attend any meetings since the 26th of June 2024, and the six-month period will expire on the 26th of December. As monitoring officer, I'm aware of the reasons for absence, and I do consider it appropriate for the council to grant the dispensation and the recommendations set out in the report accordingly. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Can I have a mover to the report, councillor Hopgood?
Chair, if I can move the report as tabled and ask for dispensation, and at the same time send councillor Simmons our very best wishes.
Can I have a second to the report, councillor Scott?
Second that, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the report? Does any member wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the council to agree the recommendations in the report? Thank you. We move on to item 15, motion on notice. We have two motions for today's meeting. Both motions are set out on the agenda and will be displayed on the screen at the relevant time.
Chair, please could I raise a constitutional point? Chair, I'd like to raise a constitutional point of order. On the 3rd of December at 4pm, two days after the deadline for motions, on the 3rd of December at 4pm, two days after the deadline for motions, Cabinet members and directors were sent an email detailing the valid motions received for this meeting. The first two paragraphs of the motion from councillor Crute on today's agenda were not included in the notification of valid motions. Can I please get clarification as to why and as to which version was legally presented by the relevant deadline? Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Wilkes. So the version that was presented and accepted is the version as set out in the agenda for the meeting, which is the legal requirement. So the business to be transacted was included within the agenda today. The issue that arose in relation to the email that was circulated to Cabinet members was that the question had been asked as to whether or not a similar motion had been considered by the council previously. A similar motion had been in 2016, and it was that version that was circulated to the Cabinet members by mistake rather than the one that was on the agenda. But the correct motion was published on the agenda, and therefore it's valid to go forward today.
Can I ask the Director of Legal and Democratic Services to outline the procedure, please?
So the usual rules of debate apply. Movers of motions have five minutes to speak, and seconders and other speakers have three minutes. Members may only speak once on a motion, other than the mover, who has a three-minute right of reply. If an amendment is moved and seconded, the debate is on that amendment. Only one amendment may be moved and discussed at any one time, so no further amendments can be moved until the amendment under discussion has been disposed of. Each member can speak once on an amendment, except for the mover of the original motion. They have a right of reply before the amendment is put to the vote, but may not otherwise speak on it. If, following the vote, the amendment is carried, it becomes a substantive motion. If the amendment falls, the debate goes back to the original motion. When there is 15 minutes left of the time allowed for motions, the chair will confirm the number of people registered to speak at that point. No further registrations to speak will be accepted, and will work through those already registered until the expiry of the time allowed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Can I invite councillor Lucy Hovells to move her motion, please?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members. Lucy Hovells, Trimpton and Thornley Division. This morning, Chair, I formally moved the motion as printed. We all suffer with empty buildings across the county, which are unsightly and unkept, and is creating a negative impact and effect on our area and our communities. Empty buildings are a big health and safety risk since being repeatedly targeted by antisocial behaviour. This is a real concern in my village and others, and a big financial burden on the council's financial purse. And it uses lots of office of time and lots of resources. This morning, I wish to share with you an example of an empty building, the Blue Bell School in Trimpton Grange. This school was closed some time ago, and its visually rundown appearance is having a detrimental effect on the area. Since it's on the entrance and coming into our village for all to see, many of you would have seen its media headlines in the Northern Echo, and I've seen videos on the IT, people coming to take viewings and to share, which is not very good for my community. The empty building is a hotspot for crime, antisocial behaviour. It's creating nothing but negative attention and lots of coverage. The empty school has been subject to deliberate fires, arson and damage, and the school out of buildings and the school roof was set fire not too long ago, taking two appliances to attend and put the fire out. Many of the residents who live close by have endured week after week, day after day, fire set alight, antisocial behaviour, criminal damage, fear, vandalism and crime. Residents continue to port complaints to myself and my colleagues about the site. It's unkept, with boarded-up windows and overgrown weeds, and is a blight on the environment, which impacts on our residents' health and other properties nearby. The empty school building is in a state of disrespect, and the school is repeatedly targeted by vandals. All of this is costly to the council and our party agencies. It's a growing financial cost that needs to be put right, and the new owners, who I'm pleased to say are now in place after a long hard fight, will be picking up that burden. The cost of the empty building has become an expensive asset for this council. We have 24-hour, or we had and still have, I believe, 24-hour, 7-day-a-week security on the site. This is a constant drain again on council resources and our partners such as the police, the fire service, who regularly visit the site. It's a real pressure on, a big drain on our public purse, when our finances, and we hear it week after week, where finances is very scarce. The benefit of this motion is to establish a cross-party working group to save, create more resources to the council and our partners, who will help protect and not only this building but other empty buildings, and will help improve our neighbourhoods, our communities, and create a cleaner, safer environment for all communities across the county. Therefore, I move the motion, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. The motion requires a seconded. Councillor Jake Miller?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Councillor Jake Miller, Trimpton and Thornley, and I'll second the motion. Me and Lucy obviously spend too much time together because you're about to hear practically exactly the same speech, but in my voice instead. The former Blue Bell School stood empty for some time, with no adequate strategy in place to deal with it. Within this time, as you've heard, it's become a hotspot for antisocial behaviour that's ultimately cost this council and our emergency services every day. A hotspot means that damage is caused, nearby residents are affected, and the visual impact on the area becomes distorted. The damage is for this council to pay for, the affected residents is for us as councillors to support, and the visual impact is for this council to improve. So if we are responsible for all these problems caused by our empty buildings, then why isn't there a strategy? Or if there is a strategy, as some may later claim, it clearly isn't working. Why hasn't Trimpton got the attention that it deserves in relation to this empty building? If this school was in the centre of Durham, I ask, would it have been stood for so long? Would there be no strategy in place? The fact is that if this building was in Durham city centre, as soon as it was empty, it would be rectified. Our more rural areas are neglected by this council. The empty council building and many more like it across the county stand neglected. We've heard this morning of a very similar situation over in South Hetton. The former Blue Bell School has seen this council react by paying thousands of pounds to put up steel window restrictions, and recently, as previously mentioned, a 24-hour security company, external 24-hour security company, to be put in place to monitor with antisocial behaviour. How much has that cost this council to deal with one empty building in one area of this county? But it isn't just us. The police have to respond to incidents of antisocial behaviour, criminal damage. What's their cost? The building's been set alight a number of times. The fire service have to respond to. How much have they had to pay? This motion calls for party politics to be put aside and to come together to create a strategy that works for all. Well, you can laugh, but that's what it's calling for. I'm not mentioning any party. All I've said is, we all need to come together to fix a problem that happens across this whole county. Our residents deserve that, our villagers deserve that, and our emergency services deserve that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Can I just remind everyone that we are in the council chamber, and it is not acceptable to disrespect in any way? Does any member wish to speak on the motion? Councillor Liz Madison?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with councillor Hovells' motion, but I'd also like to have it extended, and that is to include as well as the council properties, unoccupied properties residential. Within Spennymore and Tuller Divisions, we have a number of properties that are empty, a blight on the environment and distress to local residents.
Councillor, can I just stop you there? Is that an amendment to the motion?
Yes.
If it is an amendment to the motion, we need that in writing, so we'll need to stop the proceedings for a short while?
It does say in the motion to create a empty building strategy, and I think that would include all buildings, council and Madison, is what I'm saying. Obviously, we have control, more control over council buildings, but we do have other departments that can pick all any issues, or it needs drawing up and it needs brought together, if that's helpful, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. On the basis of what councillor Hovells has just said, and that it can be incorporated into her motion, I'm happy for that and will withdraw my amendment.
Thank you, councillor. Do you wish to continue speaking? Thank you. Councillor Richard Bell?
Thank you, Chair. I was about to say, having heard the mover and second of the motion speak so eloquently, even at the last council meeting a number of weeks ago, the building had already been sold, and the council is very much sold, the building is very much sold now. So I was going to say, I don't really understand the purpose of this motion, other than to enable the members to speak about Trimpton and the building, because there is a strategy in place for council buildings. It may even, to my mind, cover non-council buildings. So the building's been sold, the strategy's in place, so I would have to ask, why has this motion been brought to council? I am concerned about mission creep on an empty building strategy. If people think this council is in a position to go around with a pot of money and a magic wand and compulsory purchase orders and clear up every redundant or abandoned building in the county, they are very much mistaken. We all have examples of that. There is an example in Barnard Castle of that, the Turks Head pub, abandoned, slates falling off, the council's put a fence round it to stop people being injured in the main street. We all have examples of that, so I would ask council to be very careful about what it wishes for. But my starting point would have been, in terms of just the council property is, this motion is unnecessary, it's redundant, the building has been sold, we already have an empty building strategy for council property. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Mark Wilkes?
Thank you, Chair. So a councillor who was on the cabinet of this council for years brings forward a motion asking for a policy to be put in place on our empty assets, something her party failed to do for over a decade. Councillor Hovells, why didn't you ask if there was a policy in place before bringing this motion? Why, when you were told this administration had put a policy in place over 18 months ago, have you still chosen to keep this motion on the agenda? Why are you raising concerns about a building which this council doesn't even own anymore, a building that this administration has sold, a building which is now being renovated thanks to the actions of this administration? And in response to councillor Madison, I understand, councillor Rollinson may be able to clarify, that an empty home strategy is also being worked on at the moment by officers, something that was also not done by the previous administration.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Fraser Tinsley?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. It's obvious that this is a really important issue. It's affecting many of us across the county. And there's some clarity here about whether or not we do actually have an empty building strategy. I think it's important that we do act on this as a council, and we act on it now, and we act on it quickly. And there are two reasons for that. The first reason is that a lot of these buildings that may have been purchased in the past for redevelopment purposes, they're just not going to be redeveloped. That's because since Covid, in the last three or four years, we've seen an increase in construction costs of between 30 and 50%. So buildings that maybe would have been redeveloped just aren't going to be redeveloped. So there's a change there that we need to look at as a local authority and change our strategy, if it does exist, to address that. But the other key point as well is that things have changed in terms of the wider context here. In the spring of next year, the new government will introduce a planning and infrastructure bill, and also an English devolution bill, which have the potential to change powers and to change the whole context around compulsory purchase and other issues which really affect this issue. So I think ourselves as a local authority, which are affected by these matters in ways we've heard this morning from right across the county, really need to be on the ball with this, really firing into government what the issues are, so we get a new legal legislative system, which we understand is key to this, that works for this county and works for our people in this county. Because I don't want a situation to continue like we have in my division, where we've seen a leisure centre essentially abandoned and it's becoming a blight on the community. I know you're often, many of you are suffering issues like this, but you're right, councillor Bell, this is something that is beyond us as a local authority, not just financially but legally in terms of address. But I think we do have a role to actually input into the processes that will emerge with the new legislative context that's going to come out in the next few years. with the new legislative context that's going to come out in the next few years. So I will be supporting the motion, because for me, this is not just about the obvious issues that there are in the division that's affected by the members. But this is an issue that's affecting people right across this county, and it's affecting the people we represent, and we should be addressing it and doing things that people care about in this area, not just sitting on our hands, which I'm afraid if we don't adopt this, is something that appears that we are doing. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor James Rollinson?
Thank you, Chair. We seem to have changed this motion. The motion, in my mind, deals with Blue Bell School, which is one of the council's assets, and I take that to be part of this motion. We have, and we, we now have a empty building strategy coming forward for private and commercial buildings throughout the county, and that's to be tabled shortly. And it's disappointing that Labour are seeking to gain political capital from what is a good news story over the school. The school will continue to be used as an educational facility, the sale has been concluded, and the contractors are on site and bringing the school up to date and back into use. Councillor Hovell states that, in the motion, that the building has sustained one million pounds' worth of damage. Where she gets that figure from, I don't know. We have a motion here where you can make up any figure you like, and council has to accept it without making, providing any information to back it up. I can tell council that there has been, that that kind of damage has not been caused. There was a fire in the outhouse close to the, next door to the school, which was dealt with, and we put in 24-hour security while the contracts were being exchanged at a cost to the council of £22,000. Councillor, the councillor Hovell also states that the council doesn't have an empty building strategy. That was the case under Labour for more than 100 years of running the council, but this administration brought forward a strategy in April of 2023. I'm afraid it looks like Labour never read the cabinet papers of that time, and that the corporate asset management plan is a comprehensive document dealing with all aspects of our 1,000 buildings and 2,000 acres of land. Chair, the strategy is due to be refreshed in 2025. Can I suggest that Labour now reads the strategy and reads the cabinet paper, and it would be useful if scrutiny puts it on their forward plan to look at it next year? The motion is full of discrepancies and misinformation, and I will not be voting for the motion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Before I bring in the next speaker, could I? Sorry, there are 15 minutes left of the time allowed for motions. We have four members registered to speak. No further registrations will be accepted. We will work through the list of members registered until the expiry of time. Councillor Amanda Hobgood, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm sure there's nobody in this room wouldn't agree with the sentiment of the motion. And just for a point of clarity for regarding empty properties in Durham city, it was before your time, so I appreciate you probably don't remember or aren't aware, but Winnie Hill stood empty for over 10 years in the centre of Durham city and had 24-hour security on it for that period of time, something which we raised at the time, and it should have been demolished, which we knew it was going to be. I, it's not very often you'll hear me standing here agreeing with councillor Tinsley, so thank you for raising that this morning. Around the changes that we expect to see, so far though, we have no further details on them, other than that they are coming. We do have a policy around compulsory purchase, a policy that was implemented by the last administration here, so I would have hoped everyone would know what's in that. And there are new laws apparently on their way as to what we can do. But as with everything, the devil will be in the detail on that, as will be the money as to where that's going to come from to purchase it and what's going to be used in its replacement. So we've heard from councillor Rollinson about this motion, it's factually incorrect. So this morning, I won't be voting against it, I will be abstaining, because whilst I agree with the principle, we already have it, so I can't vote for something that already exists and is already in the process and being used on a daily basis. So I'd ask members to abstain and perhaps support what councillor Rollinson said, and when it comes up for review next year, that scrutiny look at it, that will be cross-party, and every member in every division within this authority will be able to have input, rather than a select few. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Rollinson, can I ask you to speak? Thank you. Councillor Carl Marshall?
Thanks, Chair. I mean, I think the motion's very clear here, to set up a cross-party working group to create an empty building strategy, and seems to be a bit of loggerheads within our own cabinet here about whether we've got a strategy, whether we haven't, whether it's working, whether it's not. Half the cabinet's abstaining, half of them are voting against the motion. You know, the council's in absolute disarray. Cleanly, Chair.
Can I please bring up a point of order? There is nobody here has said that a policy doesn't exist. We have all said that a policy exists.
Councillors, councillors, councillors. Thank you, councillor Marshall. Can I just remind you, you are in the council chamber. It is rude and disrespectful to another councillor to do what you just did. Please remember where we are. Councillor Marshall.
Thanks, Chair. I mean, basically, regardless of whether there is a bit of a strategy or there isn't, there hasn't been any delivery against it, and you can see that with your eyes. We've had a petition here raised by residents from one part of the county on an empty building this morning, and I think all of us as local members can look around our communities and see issues with empty buildings around the county, Chair. Chair, it comes down to political choices, we've had excuses that we haven't got enough money to deal with them, it's not the council's responsibility to deal with them. Chair, there's fortunes being spent on projects that were political choices in Durham city, around the art gallery, the fancy restaurant. Chair, there's the running costs of county all that, which are costing the council 1.9 million a year. That, I would say, would give us a bit of a head start with tackling some of these empty buildings and repurposing them with our communities. Chair, just because the building's been sold, that doesn't solve the problem, it's then got to be redeveloped. So, Chair, I just, I just think for me, set up a cross-party working group that can do a proper review of exactly what, what is happening at the minute, what the needs are, make sure it has some leadership and resource going forward, because it's clear to me that that's not going to come from the cabinet or from the cabinet member that clearly are totally out of touch with our outlying communities around the county, Chair. They've had three and a half years to put a problem right, and they're still going on about 100 years of a Labour council. They've been running this county for the past three and a half years, and they've got a lack of understanding, and they've shown a lack of leadership, and they certainly have shown a massive lack of delivery for our communities, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Alwyn Gunn?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Marshall has actually said a lot of what I was actually going to say, so I'll be as brief as possible. I do think that there have been several red herrings that have been thrown out across here to us from councillor Bell and councillor Wilkes in particular regarding this particular motion. It very, very clearly says to establish a cross-party to create an empty building strategy to prevent issues such as this happening in Trimpton. So regardless of whether the building has been sold or not, Chair, this is about establishing a cross-party group to do something about what we're told, and there is complete confusion here from across the floor, from the coalition, about whether there is a strategy or whether there isn't a strategy. And in fact, councillor Rollinson actually said, a strategy is coming forward to be tabled shortly. So where does that fit, Chair, with what we're being told by other members of the coalition from across the floor? It doesn't sit with me at all. Look, let's look, we've had from, we've had from councillor Tinsley as well, that there will be changes. This is really about trying to do something to prevent these empty buildings remaining absolute nightmares for residents in those communities. So let's not throw these red herrings around, let's actually do something about it, and I fully support this motion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Watson and councillor Sexton had registered to speak after we had already said that we wouldn't take any more registrations.
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
I do apologise.
Thank you, Chair.
Councillor?
We, I accept. Are we okay?
You registered after we'd said we weren't taking any? Councillor Angela Sirtis was in the queue but was, has removed herself. Can I now invite councillor Lucy Hovell to give her right of reply?
Thank you, Chair. We don't have a policy in place, and I've been told that a number of times, that we don't have a policy. We do have a plan that came before, which is kindly shared with us when I spoke to councillor Rollins, which outlines there's a plan being put in place, which will come forward in 2025, which would probably go to scrutiny to have a look. I believe scrutiny have got their work programme in place, and I used the, so as far as I've been informed, we don't have a policy, and that's hence why I brought that forward. There may have been some work being done, but obviously this is about-
Chair, point of order.
Sitting round a table and doing some work to help the process.
Sorry.
I've just, I've just emailed all members the corporate asset management plan, which includes the strategy for empty buildings of ours. Thank you.
This is about empty building strategies, and I keep going back to that. Anyway, if I may, Chair, I believe if we've done a bit of work and we've got round the table work together, we might actually save some money and put some coffers back into the council purse. But if that's not going to be an option, that's up to members. But anyway, the information I received about the costs actually came from this council. I don't make figures up, I actually have been working away and chipping away at this, and I used the Trimpton as example to simplify it. We've already heard the problems in South Hetton, we've got the problem in our local members, and many members have that similar problem. I used Trimpton because that's where I'm from, and it was easier to use that to simplify what I'm trying to say. So it's about empty buildings across the county, and we don't have a policy in place. We may have a plan, like you said, which will come forward in 2025. I think we need to do something now. I have no problem working with any member to bring something forward and to make our communities across the county, the whole county, a better place to live and to be amongst, that we can work in and to live in. So, Chairman, I'm sticking with the motion, and I do think this motion can make a positive difference for all residents across County Durham. Chair, if you're going to adjourn, can I ask for a name vote, please?
We need 10 members? Thank you. Can I hand over to the Director of Legal and Democratic Services to proceed with the vote?
Thank you, Chair. So when you hear the buzzer, that will signify that the vote is open. It's one in favour of the motion, two against, and three to abstain. If you press the wrong button, pressing the right button will correct your vote. If you have problems with your handsets, please raise it in the air and a member of the team will come and assist. We have had a valid request for a name vote, so how members vote will appear in the minutes. Thank you. That's the vote open.
We're closing the vote. Councillors? Councillors? Can I remind us we are in the chamber? 4.51 against 21, abstentions 31. The motion is carried. Thank you, councillors. We have reached the 30-minute limit, and councillor Crute has agreed that his motion will be deferred to the January meeting, and it will be the first of the motions on the agenda. We move to item 16. Question from members. Question from members. Members, we have received one question for today's meeting submitted by councillor Kevin Shaw. The question will be displayed on the screen. Can I invite councillor Shaw to ask his question, please?
Thank you, Chair. To ask the relevant portfolio holder what the financial impact has been for each of the daytime businesses in Seum which are located in the adjacent areas where car parking charges have been reduced.
Thank you, councillor. Can I invite councillor Elizabeth Scott, cabinet portfolio holder for Economy and Partnerships, to respond to the question, please?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thanks for the question from councillor Shaw. Can you hear me? Like other councils, and as a council with fifteen thousand businesses, we do not and should not track the individual financial performance of every business. However, we use other data to provide us with a measure of the performance and vitality of our main centres. This includes both measures of property vacancies across the town and an assessment of footfall. The most recent vacancy figure for Seum measured in summer 2024 shows a ninety-two point eight per cent occupancy, which is the highest occupancy in the county. This compares to a national high street average occupancy rate, which remains at about eighty-six per cent. Earlier this year, you will have seen the highly positive press around the Seum Marina, with both the berths and the associated units being fully occupied for the first time, helping to contribute to the diverse offer of the town. Having provided long-term investment to reposition Seum's economy, we continue to provide support to businesses, implementing the Townscape Heritage Programme, providing business advice and financial support to new or diversifying businesses through our UK Shared Prosperity Programme, including three new businesses in Seum recently receiving support. In the year-to-date, we have progressed ten business inquiries for the town, and we've continued to support events, including the recent food festival, which attracts over twenty thousand visitors. We routinely assess all available data for Seum and our other towns to ensure we can support policy and programme development and to assist our centres be effective retail and leisure destinations. We will continue to provide support and assistance to new businesses and those seeking to diversify. We remain committed to providing support to businesses in our town centres, including thriving centres such as Seum, and will continue to work as we develop new strategic place plans to identify future priorities and opportunities within towns across the county. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Scott. Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair, for the answer to the question I never asked. However, moving on, local residents have directly raised with me a concern that a restrictive covenant may be in place around the Terrace Green and may also include two adjoining car parking areas in Seum.
Councillor, councillor.
Can I ask the council how the council would address the issue...
Councillor, the question must, supplementary question must arise directly out of the original question.
Yes.
All the response.
See, on drugs, it directly corresponds to the question I've asked. Can I ask how the council would address the issue of car parking charges and fines already imposed in these areas if it is determined that a restrictive covenant is in place?
Yeah, sorry. I mean, that does not arise from the question or the answer that I've given, and I'm sorry councillor Shaw doesn't like the answer. That Seum's actually doing really well.
Thank you, councillor Scott. Colleagues, that concludes today's business for the council meeting. I would like to thank everyone for taking part, and to those members of the public and media who have watched the meeting. Can I wish you all the compliments of the season, and hope that you have a peaceful Christmas and New Year. Thank you.